I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is June 22nd. It's a regular meeting of council. It is 6:59. First is the meeting to call for order and adopt agenda. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted as circulated. Could I have a mover, please? I'll move. Councillor Campbell moves. Can I second her?
I'll second it.
Pat Cahn seconds it. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. Good. Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Next on the agenda is an amendment to the agenda to add the Salkirk Biz Resolution. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Can I have a secondor? Councillor Cliver seconds it. All, got any questions about it? Look, I'm gonna read your resolutions first. Right. Okay. Be it resolved that the council accept the following additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. 15-4 Salkirk Biz, 2023 Salkirk Biz Annual Parade Fair. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Can I have a secondor, please?
I think I seconded all of them.
Your mover was Councillor Cliver?
Yep. Any questions regarding this?
Nope. I just discussed it.
Okay. Can I call for the vote, please? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Next we go down to, there's nothing, nothing. Quote to 7.1 Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 6th. Be it resolved that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Council held on June 6th be approved? Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Can I have a secondor, please? Councillor Campbell seconds it.
Cliver.
Cliver seconds it. Any comments, questions on this? None? I don't know if I had one or not. None, okay. Can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carried. Now we go down to 7.2 Regular Meeting of Council. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council be held on June 8th be approved? Could I have a secondor, please? Could I call for a mover, please?
Also moved.
Councillor Cliver moves. Can I have a secondor, please? Councillor Campbell seconds it. Any questions, comments on it? I think this was the one I had, something like that. I'll look at it. No, okay. Nothing. Can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carried. Now we go down to, there's no delegations, no bylaws, no accounts receivable.
Payment Registry, 10.1.
Accounts received for information, 10.1. Payment Registry. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? Is out June 15th? None, okay. So then we move down to 11 Monthly Payroll. So anyone have any questions regarding payroll?
Can we just go back to the payment register for a second?
Sure, okay.
Could I ask, Mayor, I know you're looking through these quite thoroughly, so what was the submersible pump, submersible pump and rent refund? Is that a refund? Is that an expenditure? It sounds like it's expenditure for $18,000. Where was that pump? Where was it used and what was it used for?
I know there was a lift station the pump went. I forget the location. I don't know. Do you remember which?
I believe that was the River Springs lift station. And so it was for rental, which was reduced. The, our staff negotiated a reduction in the rent for the time we used that spare pump. We had to repair.
Was it emergency?
Yes, it's considered an emergency whenever a lift station pump is, is out of service. So we always would rent a unit so that we have sufficient pump capacity so we don't have a backflow of wastewater.
Okay, so does, the, the pump, what fund is it coming out of?
That would be a question for the Director of Finance. I don't know off the top of my head.
Mr. Mayor?
Just, I'm wondering if that would be then charged back to the residents or is that going to be charged back to one of our, our operating fund, our capital?
Well, it would be a utility expense, but exactly where in that utility it would, would be best to have our Director of Finance. I can request that information and for her to follow up with council.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Campbell?
Yeah, Ms. Shaw, just, I know you're not gonna have the answer now, but can we find out if we have a backup pump for that and whether, you know, if, because that's quite an expense and if it happens a couple of times, I'm just thinking it's something that we should look at having a backup pump?
Certainly. I believe the design for that lift station requires three pumps. We have two, so I can follow up with council on that.
Oh, so like there are two pumps in the lift?
There, there is always two, there's two, because if one fails, we immediately need the, the second.
Okay.
And, and so as I understand it, that lift station is designed for three pumps, but I can provide some, some information, some follow-up information after I speak to our Director of Finance.
Yeah, I guess like Councillor Campbell makes a good point. Would make sense to have a spare pump if all the pumps we have are identical. Then there's a, so I'm not too sure if they're all identical. That's the big question of it, right? I mean...
Right, and, and they would be sized per, per lift station requirements, so they, they may not be interchangeable, but it's certainly a good question for our Director of Finance when you're talking about budget items.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Any other? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just noticed that the lobby seating for the access is here, so I just wanna make a quick comment. We were at the local improvement district, public open house on Tuesday, the 20th, and I just wanted to recognize that the lobby seating is very comfortable. I had a chance to sit on it and talk to a resident and it looks great, looks good for the access center and could see that, good to see that the, the charge was much lower than what we were anticipating. So, thank you, the administration, for doing that.
Any more questions on the payment registry? None, okay. So none, we'll go back down to the payroll. Does anyone have any questions on payroll? Nothing, okay. So then I'll just read the resolution. Be it resolved that the payroll for the month of May as follows be approved as presented? Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Councillor Campbell seconds it. Any comments, questions regarding it? Hearing none, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. We go down to 12. Nothing, nothing on 12, nothing on 13, 14, there's nothing. 14.1 Information Received, Second Payment of the Operating Grant. Did anyone, anyone have any questions regarding this?
Well, I didn't see an amount, Mayor. I was just wondering, I saw that we got, it was a very general letter. Do you know what the number was?
It's actually three pages, should be attached to your agenda.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, the first payment was received in March of $170,151.13. The second payment received is $307,674.12.
So then we should have a third payment, yeah. According to the estimated total of grant.
Yes.
Right, because your estimated total is $785?
Yes, I'm, I'm not sure if they do three or, or if it's quarterly that we receive, but there will be additional payment, yes.
Sorry, I missed that last page. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, now there is Cartier Regional Co-op. They have, for information only, 14-2. Any questions on, regarding it? None, okay. Then we go down to, oh, is this, is this the audit of financial statements? This one?
Yep. Yes.
It is.
I lost my screen for some reason. Okay, no questions on it? So I guess that's satisfactory for what you, have you gotten it all right?
That's correct. So we have a copy, we forwarded it to our auditors, and I'll just add here, we are waiting for one outstanding audit before we can move forward with our complete consolidated statements, but we are in, in the process of getting those finalized for council.
So the other audit you should be getting by the end of next week?
Good. Excellent.
Mayor?
Yes?
I think that we're having a meeting on Monday to approve the Red River Planning Statements.
Great.
So then after that, you should get it.
Yeah.
Zoom meeting to approve.
In, in short order, we'll have that forwarded to the auditors and, and we'll have our consolidated drafts to council, hopefully in July.
Good.
So next on agenda is 14.3 Rogers Communication Propose Wireless Relocation as a Resolution. There's also, I guess if everybody's, has everyone looked at this, what they've planned to do?
Yes.
They have a photograph, they have a site sketch. So I believe it looks like it's at the east end of the property, close to number, close to the perimeter and number eight. That, that's how I read this?
Yeah.
I think, Mayor, that we requested that for this point and it, it has been moved. Is this now the final location and are we signing off on this now?
I think we should do a resolution first before we discuss it, just so that we can discuss it.
Yeah, we should be doing a resolution.
So maybe read the resolution and then we can discuss it.
Do we have a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a mover, please?
Oh, you have to read it first. Do you have to read it first?
You have to read the resolution, then we'll remove the resolution.
Yeah, okay. Whereas the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul passed Resolution 2023-190 at a regular meeting of council on April 27th, 2023, to submit opposition to Evolve Surface Strategy for Concerning Location of Proposed Wireless Communication Installation of 1201 Miller Road. And whereas by way of email dated May 5th, 2023, Evolve provided the municipality with response regarding the location, alternate locations, proposed site, and relocation of the proposed site based on the concerns and suggested locations provided in Resolution 2023-190. And whereas the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul defeated Resolution 2023-211 at a regular planning, planning meeting of council on May 11th, 2023, to give concurrence for the location of the proposed wireless communication installation at 1201 Miller Road. And whereas by way of email dated June 7th, 2023, Evolve provided the municipality with a revised location of the proposed site based on the concerns and suggested provided. Now therefore be it resolved that the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul provide Evolve with a letter supporting the revised location of the proposed wireless communication installation at 1201 Miller Road as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it.
Councillor Cacktime moves. Councillor Bichetti, Cliver seconds it.
Discussion.
Okay, can we have a discussion now, please? Then, go ahead, Councillor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for reading the motion into the record. I'm pleased with the way the motion is worded, because it does track the, the process here is a sort of a long process. I don't think the process needs to be this difficult between the RM and with Evolve and with Rogers, but it is what it is, and I wanna thank the residents, the residences who spoke up regarding this issue. And, you know, I think that initially for Evolve Surface Strategies to propose a location so close to a resident, I just don't think that common, common sense was used, and it prompted a discussion here at the RM for, for sort of a policy statement saying that, you know, although we recognize the importance and value of cell towers, to put them in such close proximity to residents, it don't make, doesn't make any sense really from a planning perspective for, for building strong neighborhoods, and that, I know that there was discussion around this table to make, if there's the, and, so if cell towers were gonna be going up, that it should be at least a minimum a kilometer away from the closest residence, so I'm glad that that was on the table, and that's still for consideration at this council. Going back to this discussion here, the location is now a little over half a kilometer away from the closest residence, so that's much more reasonable, much more palatable, and I think it's a better solution. I don't know why they didn't do that in the first place, but nonetheless, I think, I think we're, we can land sort of in a bit of a compromise here that makes sense. But just wanted to recognize the LUXs who are here and for their continued advocacy to provide the suggestions and the concerns that they had regarding the proposed cell tower. At the end of the day, like I say, as difficult as it was, it created, it created awareness for the issue and also created an opportunity for this council to have a say in terms of cell tower, cell tower construction within the RM. And I believe, and maybe I'll ask the CEO, the acting CEO, to comment, but I, I just wanna make sure that we did capture the whole essence that this is supposed to be a multi-tenant tower, because I don't see it in the motion, but I, I know that we had discussion at, at this table.
Yes, I can address that point. Thank you, councillor. Let me just pull up the email. So I will say as well, as, as read in the resolution, this, this resolution is, is asking for a letter supporting the revised location. The public community consultation from Evolve will continue, and following that, they will come back and ask for concurrence. The item regarding the possibility of co-location is, is included in that initial public consultation package. Co-location must be explored and found structures disqualified prior to proposing a new structure, and carriers also prefer to co-locate wherever possible, it saves them construction and some of the ongoing maintenance costs. So that was already provided for in that initial package, and they confirmed that that is the standard practice, and, and any new proposal would have to be disqualified from a new tower before proceeding with a new tower.
So what you're saying is that, that the thought hasn't been lost in terms of the, the, sort of, what did I just say? The co-locating?
Co-location will, will always be pursued first.
Yeah.
And only upon disqualification would a, a new tower be proposed in the area.
Okay. So can this tower be?
Yes, it can be co-located as long as it meets the needs of whatever party proposes.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to know. Thanks for reading it, thanks for reading that to the record.
Mr. Mayor? Councillor Cliver, and then I'll, I'll get you, councillor.
Yeah, I think one of the things we've learned from this situation is that we need a bylaw regarding cell phone towers, but because we didn't have a bylaw, they had a little bit more power to do whatever it is that they wanted to do. And they said because we didn't have a bylaw, they could. So we need to put together a bylaw regarding location of cell phone towers. And also, there was a cell phone tower that was put up without council approval in the industrial park. And I, I would still like some more information on that. Why was that tower put up without our concurrence? And the information to us just was up there one day. So we, we need to get some information on that as well.
Councillor Cliver?
Yeah, basically the same thing as Councillor Cliver had said. I just wanted to check with Ms. Shaw so, and have it on record. So right now, if anybody wants to put up a tower, they don't, you know, they don't need to go to Red River Planning or us or anything like that currently? Or do you know, do you know what the status or the steps are if they do wanna do it? Like this one, we kinda got involved because of the residents, at least that's the way I feel we got involved. The other, there was, there's been two towers recently, one at Pipeline in the perimeter and one in the industrial park that never came to council.
Right, so as I understand that what the process would be is that the, the party would reach out to Red River and the municipality, and if there's nothing requiring an, an application or approval, that information would be communicated to them. So I can, I can look up the, the business particulars of the tower you're speaking to, and I can provide that to council. But I think it's, it, council is in agreement that that is something to, to move forward with, and I would suggest speaking to the planner, Derek Eno, when you're revising your zoning bylaw, if that can be incorporated into our changes. That's next week? That's correct, yeah.
So where on Pipeline and Perimeter is a new tower?
There's two towers there now.
Yeah, one's in McEwen's.
One was the one that you were talking about that's been there forever.
Yeah.
And one's a brand new one.
And then on that location?
On the McEwen problem.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take another look. Okay.
Can't miss it.
Anything else? Nothing, okay. So...
We're gonna call for the vote?
Call for vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Carried. Now we go down to 15.1 Resolution for the West St. Paul Nursery School Lease Agreement. Be it resolved that the Council of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul authorize the mayor and acting chief administrative officer to enter into a lease agreement with the West St. Paul Nursery School for the period September 1st, 2023 to August 1st, 2026. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Can I have a secondor? Councillor Campbell seconds it. Have any questions on it?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If we can keep the nursery school costs down, I think that's a benefit for the entire community, and it's always been a really great nursery school, so I think that the increments are reasonable. I don't know how the rest of council feels about that, but...
Anyone else?
I'll say it's definitely, it's definitely economical, the, the rates being charged. So I don't think anybody would have anything to complain about with lease rates like that.
I guess my main concern is that we have other nursery schools in the area, and are we being competitive with their rates or are we putting those at a disadvantage to ours? Because there's a lot of coverage in these rates here. If I do the calculations, they're only charging a dollar fifty, a dollar fifty a square foot, and usually rental rates are about 250.
Well, I don't know about what other nursery schools are we talking about?
One in a corner of River Crest, there's a nursery school.
I think it's a daycare, though. Is that a nursery school or a daycare?
Well, it's a facility that looks after younger children, so I'm thinking it's all...
Not a daycare, though. It, it, the nursery school's not a daycare, it's a nursery school.
Who, who operates the nursery school?
Well, Sherry Euster operated it, who operates it now.
It's with the West St. Paul Nursery School.
Yeah.
And, and so they, they run two, two programs. There's a, you know, an afternoon and a morning session part-time during the week. It's not full-time care.
Oh, it is? Okay.
No, it's, it's not, and you'll, you'll see that's reflected in the summer where they don't have programming, the, the rate is reduced.
I noticed that. Was it just in one month and then?
That, because they don't have programming in that month.
Yeah, okay.
Usually it's about two days a week for nursery schools.
I, I believe that's what they run.
That's, that's what our kids did, two days a week in the mornings, and then some come in in the afternoon, some come in different days, so this is not necessarily, I don't think, an organization that's making a whole lot of money. They're, they're covering their wages and...
Well, that's what it costs.
And providing nursery care, right? This is preschool.
So is that just a dedicated room for the nurses?
That's correct. It's one room.
So if someone else wants to rent their room, can they rent it or?
No, it's, it's a dedicated room for, for, for this purpose.
Okay. So any other questions, concerns? Okay, can I call for the vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Carried. Now we go down to 15.2 Appointment of Border Revisions. Be it resolved that the Council of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul appoint Glenn Veskey?
Veskey.
Veskey, Terry Neplick, and Lorraine Saunders to the...
Lauren.
Lauren, Lauren Saunders to the 224 RM of West St. Paul Board of Revision to be held on Wednesday, November 1st, 2023. Be it further resolved that Council of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul appoint Glenn Luzick, is that right?
Veskey.
Veskey, Veskey for the, to serve as the presiding officer of the border revision and Director of Finance, Kristo Sahira as, to act as Secretary of the Appointed Board. Be it further resolved that they be re-nominated in accordance with the bylaw number 2014-14. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Councillor Cliver seconds it. Any comments, questions? All in, okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? None. 15-3, West St. Paul Department Appoints, Appointment 15-3. Be it resolved that the Council of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul appoint Chris Rosolowicz?
Rosolowicz.
Rosolowicz to the West St. Paul Fire Department effective June 22nd, 2023, with the condition he obtain a medical license from the College of Paramedics within six months of his appointment of date. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Bichetti moves. Secondor. Councillor Campbell seconds it. Can I, any questions, comments?
Yes.
Go ahead. Councillor Cliver?
I, I would, I would like, like to know whether or not Mr. Rosolowicz is going to pay for his training, or is there an expectation that we are paying for his training? Or is he challenging the test? It's not clear to me here what's going on. And I know that training's $10,000, so I'd like to know what's, what's happening.
So I believe when I was talking to Ryan, the fire chief, he's saying that he already has his medical license, but he didn't renew it, so he's gonna challenge the test. He has six months' time to do it, and he feels that he is confident that he will be able to pass the test, because he was a paramedic previously with the fire department.
Okay, and if he doesn't pass it, are we paying for the training? Because we're putting in this resolution that he has to have a medical license from the College of Paramedics, we're making it a requirement.
I would gather that from the resolution, the way it's written, if I get the resolution again.
The way the resolution's written, what?
Well, according to this, he's supposed to have a medical license from College of Paramedics within six months of his appointment, so...
Yeah, but it's not saying who's going to pay that. That's what I'm trying to get here. Who's going to pay if he has to retrain? If he's challenging the test, there's a cost involved.
Yeah.
And if he's retraining, there's a cost involved. So who's gonna be paying the cost? Us or him?
You can, you can revise it by saying at the member's expense.
Yeah.
All that, Councillor Bichetti?
Do we not pay for our fire department's training? Like, we send them out for the SCUBA, for all the other stuff, like they go up to Brandon for training, like that's paid for through the RM, that's a service that, you know, as a volunteer fire department, we...
Certainly, it's...
Keep them certified.
It's an investment in our fire department to train the staff to be able to respond.
Councillor Cliver?
Okay, I recall very distinctly being in Phoenix when we had this conversation with Fire Chief Yakel. We hadn't decided yet whether or not we were gonna pay the $10,000 per firefighter and how many firefighters were gonna be trained. This is a new legislation, and if we're going to hire firefighters, more firefighters, wouldn't it be better that they already have the qualifications instead of us expending another $10,000 for another qualified, for another person to qualify? So if he already has had the license and it's expired, then he, we should put in here that it is at his expense that he obtains this, because he's testing, right? If we're making it a requirement and he's already had the license, then he should, and he's challenging it, he should pay for it. We should be hiring now when we're hiring, we should be hiring if we can with paramedics' license. And I know that's, that's a big ask, because it's a volunteer fire department, but if we're gonna keep hiring and paying $10,000 every time we hire, we still got 31 members that aren't trained.
Councillor Bichetti? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think important to just note the differences, Councillor Cliver, I believe, is talking about the upcoming changes to training requirements.
Yeah.
Those aren't in place now. That's, that's not the, the training that, that we're looking at.
So it's only, it's still only seventy-two hours then?
I'm, I'm just trying to reach out to the Fire Chief to get some clarification for council.
No, this is a College of Paramedics license. This is a full paramedic.
We can come back to the item, just lay it over.
Okay.
And come back to it, yeah.
Did you have a comment, Councilor?
No, no, I would agree with Councilor Pacheco, just to lay it over.
Okay, so we'll carry on to, we'll lay it over this one, we'll carry on to the next one.
Oh, if I, if I could, before you move, so our Fire Chief has provided that the candidate is fully trained, just needs to get that medical license back. He's going to take the exam and I'll follow up any cost to RM if, if you'll just bear with me. The Fire Chief is, is responsive, so I think if we could just do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just take a moment.
Are we waiting or are we?
He's, our Fire Chief is responding. I just wanted to confirm the cost. What we're talking about is just the medical license cost, which typically when we're renewing licenses, what happens is the members pay out of pocket to do the, the license and the RM would reimburse that fee. I'm just going to confirm that would be the case in this situation before, before we put that to the record.
Ms. Shaw, are you also finding out what the cost is of that test?
Yes, I'm asking what the cost is to the municipality, if any. But I, I believe it's just the, the license fee.
And if the member's not successful? Yeah. Are they required to take the course?
Well, if, if they're not able to obtain the, the license, then, then they wouldn't be qualified for the service.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I would suggest that council follow past practice and if, if we, in the past, reimburse for, for testing requirements. Our Fire Chief says that we'd have to cover, we would normally cover the College of Paramedics' membership like we do for every member for twenty twenty-three approximately five to six hundred dollars. That's an estimate from, from our Fire Chief. And like I say, we do that for the membership. So I would, I would say best practice would be to continue the, the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Can I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, none, carried. Now we go down to fifteen point four, Selkirk Biz. Be it resolved that the coun. Okay, here it is. Whereas the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul is a member of the Selkirk Biz and whereas the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul supports the events held by the Selkirk Biz, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul sponsor the twenty twenty-three Selkirk Biz Annual Fair Parade in amount of five hundred dollars. And further that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul participates in the twenty twenty-three Selkirk Biz Annual Fair Parade on Saturday, June, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Beshetti moves, can I second her please?
I'll second.
Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any comments, questions?
What are we going to be doing here? Are we doing a sponsorship or are we doing?
I guess we're doing both or one or, one or two or? Is it, is it, go ahead, Councilor?
Yeah, I just, I'll just put some comments on the record, like, this is the first time I've seen this request. I'm not sure what the history is with the Selkirk Biz Annual Fair Parade and the RM is, but, I mean, it's not large dollars, but at the same time, I know what's, what's to stop other, other areas, other municipalities from applying for a similar, a similar request? So I'm, like personally, I'm not really in favor of, of this type of request because it's not really in the RM of West St. Paul. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from attending and supporting them. But those are just my thoughts in terms of providing a grant.
Councilor Beshetti?
Just for history, we are a member of the Selkirk Biz and we do have businesses in West St. Paul that are members of the Selkirk Biz, so.
Okay.
Really, we're, we're part of that group. Not as big as I guess the city of Selkirk would be with, which has more retail and stores, that kind of stuff, but we do have some of the restaurants and some of the vendors through West St. Paul that are members of that, so.
Okay. Good.
Why would the vendors, just a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Why would vendors of West St. Paul be members of Selkirk Biz? I think if the member, if people that reside here have businesses in Selkirk, that's all I understood. But why would, why would businesses here be part of Selkirk Biz? Is there some kind of connection or like, do they promote the businesses in Selkirk to, for West St. Paul?
Well, I, I do know that, you know, the, I think the Yacht Club, Royal Yacht Club is part of it and they were, the River Crest, I know they were trying to, you know, establish, you know, some sort of link between West St. Paul, St. Andrews and, and Selkirk, you know, even previously when I was on council. And it has been a tough go, but I know that. I know it's not an easy thing to try to link all the communities together. So I guess this is, you know, some of the businesses are part of it and I don't own any of these businesses, so I'm not sure if, what their reasoning is to be part of it, but I just, I do know from past years that they, there are some businesses part of it and maybe when more businesses move into West St. Paul, they will be also.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate Councilor Beshetti's comments and that I didn't know that history that we're part of the Selkirk Biz. I mean, if, if the mover and second are amenable to it, I, I would then revise the motion to read two hundred fifty dollars sponsorship.
Mayor, I'm just looking at the participating merchants in Selkirk Biz and just on the Back to Black Weekend and I don't see any, anybody here from West St. Paul. I do see Harry's Flying Foods from St. Andrews, but I don't see anything here from West St. Paul. These are all, these are all shops of St. Andrews. These are all either St. Andrews or Selkirk. So, okay.
Doctor, you need to see.
Yeah, I, I can add then, I, I think that it's in our municipality's interest as members of Selkirk Biz to be promoting this organization as a Chamber of Commerce to our business community. They provide a really vital role for business promotion and I, I think if, if we can, we can help get word out that we have this, this organization that businesses can, can join and, and get services from that, that's in their best interest.
I, I can, can you clarify that comment? What services would, would businesses from here get from Selkirk?
Well, from, from the Chamber of Commerce, right? So, for example, our neighbors in East St. Paul, their local Chamber of Commerce closed, if you will, and they're asking to join the Selkirk Biz. So there's power in partnering regionally in, in promoting our communities. They have different initiatives that you can take part in, different events, lots of visibility. And so I'm, I'm sure they could speak to what their benefits are better than, than I could, but they, they definitely provide a good service.
Mayor, Mayor, just to the mayor and back to the CEO, did we not give Selkirk Biz some money this year already with regards to Catfish Den?
Yeah, that's correct. So council had previously given a five hundred dollar sponsorship to the Catfish Den, so that's another event.
You're giving quite a bit of money to them. We're giving another five hundred dollars now for a parade. I don't mind giving five hundred dollars a year, but for me, that stops there because we've already supported them this year with a five hundred dollar donation.
The Catfish Den, that was the one that was on Lockwood, on the Red River?
I, I'm sorry. I, I don't know the details off the top of my head.
Do you want to?
I'm pretty sure that was the one.
Yeah, and they were creating a village who really wasn't, it was them, I believe that was.
It was a dinner that you sponsored, that we sponsored.
I, I mean, like, they're requesting five hundred and, and, you know, they're requesting. We can give anything from up to that amount and so I'd still like to entertain a two hundred fifty dollar sponsorship.
As a mover, I'm good with that.
And then we can go to the.
But I think we need to cap it. I don't think we need to give them any more money this year. I mean, I don't think there's any other organization. Is there any other organization that is outside of West St. Paul that we've given seven hundred and fifty dollars to?
I think that we have a history with, it sounds like we have a history. It sounds like a member's past.
We have, we have a history, but.
Have participated, so I don't want to cut that off and we can look at it next year.
Yeah, but we're, we should cap it because there's other people that want to have sponsorship from us as well and will come for, for sponsorship, so. If we've already given five hundred this year and we're giving another two fifty, then I think we, and we gave that in March. So now we're in, now we're in June and we're asking for another five hundred. It's going to keep coming. They're going to keep asking. As long as we keep giving, they're going to keep asking, so we have to decide where we're going to cap it. Or are we going to cap it or are we just going to give them whatever they ask? I think council needs to make that decision.
I'm just curious who our member for Selkirk Biz is.
Stan.
I was the, I'm the mayor, so I tried to go to their place once in a while, but they always have it on the day that I wasn't able to go.
No, but don't we have a council member that's?
Yes, your mayor is appointed to the Selkirk Biz.
Oh, I thought it was official.
I thought Councilor correct.
I was the one. And the one day I.
He was.
The one day I didn't go, they canceled it because that was the day I was far. So, because I was interested in knowing what they were all about, so. I, I see that to Selkirk, they promote Selkirk businesses and I didn't, I didn't realize there were some municipalities, some businesses here in West St. Paul that were connected to this. So I guess, I guess there's a motion for two fifty on the table. Is, is that what we all go ahead?
And does, does council wish to amend the resolution to participate in the, in the parade or would you like to leave that?
Well, I guess the question is, how do you participate in the parade? What do you got to do to participate?
You do what Councilor Beshetti did and you drive a vehicle from West St. Paul in there, I guess.
Oh, is that right?
It wasn't, it wasn't this one. We were in one and, maybe it was this one.
Because it was COVID for two years, so you couldn't have done.
Yeah, well, that's what I don't remember because it was already.
This, is, is this that rodeo weekend in?
Yeah.
In Selkirk? That's what it is, right? It's rodeo weekend? Yes. I mean. So I'm, I'm not sure, like, does anyone want to participate?
So why don't we just go for the two fifty sponsorship and that's it?
Yeah, I'm great with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And then we'll, before it comes to us next year, if we could just get some more info and the businesses that are, are part of the Selkirk Biz from West St. Paul, just so we know what kind of standing we have there.
Yeah.
I, I think just to speak to this, I think one of the reasons why we get it so late is because the Executive Director resigned and there's a new Executive Director that started within the last month or two months. So that's probably one of the things that fell through the cracks here, which is probably why we got it so late. Otherwise, it probably would have came out earlier than what it did. But yes, so if we can just change the amount to five hundred and then two fifty from five hundred?
Noted.
And there won't be anybody attending?
Noted.
None, okay. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, carried. So now we have a question period. Does anyone have any? Is anyone coming up for questions? None?
You phrase it as a question.
Phrase it as a question.
Start off with, did you know? Did you know? Say, did you know?
The question was asked by Councilor Cliver, how does a tower get up without knowing? Like, how does, without the council finding out? In the section five of the original Rogers proposal that we received regarding the tower by our house, it states in section five, bottom, that the RM of West St. Paul Planning Board was consulted about the tower. So they knew all about it. That would be handled soon.
Might not. It might be Red River plan.
No, it, it was Red River and, and Red River and.
And West St. Paul?
And West St. Paul. It specifically said West St. Paul in the, if you, if you want to look at section five of the original proposal. So anyway, that sort of answers that. As well, just a comment, after multiple emails from Evolve, we're still having a tough time understanding. Evolve can be suddenly, you receive emails from Evolve, we receive emails from Evolve stating that there's no other option for this cell tower to go. There's no other option. Could not go anywhere east. It can go north, it can go west, had to be in that location. Suddenly, after you had, you sent them a letter of non-concurrents and you kept saying it's in the flight paths of, of, of St. Andrew Airport, and suddenly they say they moved it four hundred meters to the, to the, to the east? And effectively, it shouldn't, should it not be in a flight path now? They, they said it would be a flight path. So it, I'm not saying, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how, how this works. I've never been involved with this. I've been in business and if I was in business and, and a, and a contractor treated me like this, it's unbelievable. You would never, so it's blatantly saying something and then, okay, go ahead. That, that's the real tough thing we're having, tough time we're having with this.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Question to you. I, I don't, I don't understand. If, if that's maybe a normal thing, I don't know.
Well, I guess we could say that we had a discussion with Rogers directly instead of Evolve.
Okay.
And that made the difference. That's, that's all I'll say unless Councilor Beshetti wants to elaborate?
This is an answer.
No?
Originally, we've come to these meetings and several councils have stepped forward saying a thousand meters, we'd like to settle a thousand meters, and I understand it. You say a thousand meters and you settle on seven fifty or five hundred, you have. You've now settled on five hundred. That's the precedent now. The next wireless communication comes forward, they're going to say, well, you did five hundred meters here, why can't we do five hundred years? You just point out, I, I don't know how it works. I just wanted to want the record to see that look. There's unbelievable amount of misinformation regarding the final decision on the placement of the tower. When this first came down, we spoke to Derek Gino. He said it's a federal decision. Hundred percent federal decision. It's nothing to do with the municipality. It's nothing to do with himself. I contacted the, the Federal Department that covers innovation and they say it's the municipality. Come back to municipality and then I started asking questions. Yeah, it is the municipality. Everybody wants to, everywhere else. So basically, my wife and I feel and, and our neighbors, we are basically the West St. Paul test samples. And we, we're the ones that sort of. I'm not going to say we're appreciative for standing up first. Don't get, don't get me wrong, but we feel that we're test samples that the council and the whole RM has now learned what to do for the next people. I just want to go on record and say that. That's all you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, turn to the table.
Uh, Mayor?
Okay.
Question for you. Oh, can.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so, you know, there is two other towers that have gone up. One is close-ish to my, you know, to my neighbors as well. So, you know, we're, we're not just going to drop it, so I don't, you know, you guys aren't, you guys are the first ones that we've, I would say, stood up for, but there's other ones that have gone up now that we've noticed that we also are going to go back and see what happened and see if there's a way to, you know, alter where they are and stuff like that, so, you know, there's.
It's just we have a tough time with, when, if it wasn't for the residents, like Councilor Pacheco, if it wasn't for you coming forward, it's sort of all just gone through if it wasn't for us, but it did go through the planning department here first.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilor Cliver.
Can we, can we have our, I can see, check on that? Were the other two towers approved by our planner, like our planning person, Pamela is, or our RPD? Can we find out all those towers went up?
Yes, certainly. I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah. And that those towers should be coming to council. They shouldn't be okayed by anybody else but council.
I.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate the comment, but if it's not in the bylaw, we would have provided the, I'll, I'll look and see what information was sought.
This one wasn't in the bylaw either, though.
No, this is certainly a, a unique, you know, it's, I've not experienced an application for a tower like this. And certainly when we were provided the, the public information package, I put it on the agenda. I, I don't recall having a package like this in other towers that have been installed. But like I said, you've, you've requested and I will look into those circumstances and what exactly was asked of our municipality and of our RPD.
Mayor, can we, can we send a message to our planning, our RPD planning and to our planner that any cell phone towers that are planned in the future, that we be consulted on them until our bylaw is written?
I guess we can do that, sure. Councilor Campbell?
So I don't understand why we can't just.
So I don't understand why we can't just, you know, why we have to wait till our new bylaw, you know, why can't we just start a bylaw immediately and get it into place? I don't understand why we have to wait.
That's, in April 17th or 20th, 27th, that's, you said you were going to start the bylaw. So we thought, beautiful, like, we're not, it's going to start the ball rolling. So now, two months later, it has you to start, but that's, what's done is done. I understand that.
Do we have neighboring, neighboring municipalities that have those bylaws?
Do we? I'm not sure.
I think East St. Paul.
I'm not sure.
That's something we could check into?
Yeah, certainly.
We might be able to duplicate it and not have to embed the wheel again?
I do have a question, but before I ask, I just want to say we will forever be grateful to all five of you for what you've done for us because if a tower had gone up in the original location, like, it would have ruined our home. And it, like, it would have destroyed, like, it would have been awful beyond imagination. So I'll forever be grateful to all five of you, most of us are, and the steroids as well. My question is, when you do put the bylaw through, can you still do it for a kilometer, like, rather than, like... And just, can you put rules in so no one ever has to go through what we did? Because if we had been a young family with young kids and both working full-time, we never would have had the time and energy to put this thing together. I mean, my husband did so much of the running around the legwork, talking to people, and he's just incredible because he's persistent and doesn't stop. And, but if a busy family, they would never have the time and the energy and they probably would have just... And it's such a short time window. By the time you get the package, they give you no time, and then they just send you this standard letter back that says, no, 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 no. And you reply, and then they make excuses, and it's just, it's draining and it's horrible.
We received the package on the sixth and it had to be responded by the seventeenth.
So could you, when you do the bylaw, is there a way that you can put rules in place so that they can't roll, try to roll for someone else again, of all Rogers, whoever it is? Because the whole process was bewildering because you've never, it just comes out of the blue and you have no clue what you're supposed to do or who do you talk to? And so it's, if you could make it easier for people to avoid this and not have to have something terrible like a cell tower go up 200 meters from their front door.
Mayor, I guess we, just as an aside, when we put the bylaw together, I don't know if we can, but we could request, we could say in the bylaw that a public hearing has to take place. So you could call a public hearing and have people weigh in on it as well, I guess.
Well, yeah, but there is a comprehensive review being done of the, all the bylaws, zoning bylaws. So this is going to be just one thing that's added, which is, you know, and it is true, a bylaw is a, adding a bylaw is a process that takes some time, so you do...
So I understand.
So...
We understand the timing, like...
The, you were supposed to be done within the next, I'm going to say, probably by the year end. That's what I've been told of it.
However, what I'm trying to say here is you can add it to a zoning bylaw. That's fine.
Yes.
But it would be one component of that zoning bylaw rather than a separate bylaw. You have to have a trigger for it to come to council, to be approved. When you do a bylaw zoning, it just, it goes through, that's zoning, that's that. And then it could be taken care of in a development agreement rather than coming back to council for concurrence.
Okay.
So my concern is I don't want it to go into a development agreement and we never see it, and we don't know what's going on. I want it to trigger so it comes back to council and we are always aware of the fact that there's a tower going up.
I think we should, we should look at doing both, right? Have it, have it short-term in a development agreement and then also have it as a zoning bylaw, right?
You'd have to develop, like, every zoning would have to have it, right? You'd have to blanket, like, how do you blanket West St. Paul?
You can.
We had one moved on the perimeter from the retail on the east side of the tracks to the west side, right by Cannotec. There's one by our public works office. So like, they're going up, but it's...
We're not hearing about, we don't know about.
I think you, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that you're having really good discussion, which will be good to bring back when you meet with the planner. Your question period is 15 minutes and we're close to that and have other members in attendance, so you might be behind all the time.
We'll look at it.
We hear what you're saying. It's not lost on us and, yeah, exactly. We'll make sure we have some protection in place for citizens moving forward.
I'm just, I'm glad that this whole issue has come to light. Previous term, I received a phone call from a very angry, very angry businessman with a business in the business park. He complained to me, have you seen the cell tower gone up in the business park? And it wasn't just a nice conversation. However, I ended up having to say, this has never come to council. None of these towers that have gone up have ever come to council. I'm unaware that council has a role. Now, at least, council's aware and is going to do something about this. Like, I'm feeling like I didn't do my job for this business park owner. So good that it has come up. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Come on.
Mr. Belinki, you don't have any questions?
Okay, so that ends our question period. So now we're going to go in camera. 19.1. Be it resolved that in accordance with section 152.3 of the Municipal Act, council does not move in camera to discuss matters that are on preliminary stages and respecting with discussions in public could prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Be it therefore resolved that in accordance with section 83.1D of the Municipal Act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular council meeting. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Pat can move. Can I have a secondary? Council Beshetti seconds it. Any questions, comments? None? Could I call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none? Carried. So for the Rising Report, we have a motion to review and reconsider resolution 2023-217. I'm going to ask our acting CEO, Eleni Shah, to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas section 139.1 of the municipal act provides that a council may not reconsider or reverse a decision within one year after it's made unless, B, a member gives written notice to the council from at least one regular meeting to the next regular meeting of a proposal to review and reverse the decision. And whereas Council Campbell provided a notice of motion at the June 8th, 2023 regular planning meeting of council to review and reconsider resolution 2023-217, namely, be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul direct administration to commence drafting a memorandum of understanding for the extension of potable water infrastructure on Third Street, and further that administration present the drafted memorandum of understanding for council's consideration at a future meeting. And whereas the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul has reconsidered resolution 2023-217, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul direct administration to commence drafting a memorandum of understanding for the extension of potable water infrastructure on Third Street, and further that administration present the drafted memorandum of understanding for council's consideration at a future council, at a future meeting.
Could I have a motion, please?
I moved.
Can I get a recorded vote, too, please?
Actually, I moved first.
I can second it.
Council Cliver seconds it.
And I agree, I'd like a recorded vote.
Have a vote. Any comments? None? Could I have a vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
Carried. Next on the list is, Rising Report is 19.3. We discussed the five-year capital expenditure program. And we are now going to adjourn the meeting. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stands adjourned at 8:01 PM. Can I have a mover, please? Council Cliver moves. Council second her, please. Council Beshetti seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Carried.